Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council of Regular Meeting. Today is April 17th, 2019. It's 8:02 PM. I called the meeting to order. I welcome Jason Bonica to our meeting. He's substituting for Joe Marinello. Welcome. It'll be a night like no other night for you, I promise. Can I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Krajak?
Here.
Councilperson Wu?
Here.
Song? Not here yet. Savari?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Aversa?
Here.
O? Councilwoman O?
I have a phone.
No, I haven't.
She's attending via phone.
Her attorney?
Here.
Municipal attorney. Everyone's present, mayor, except Councilman Song is not in yet.
Okay, thank you. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute and remain standing after? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to have a moment of silence for two people from our community. The first person is former Councilman Nunez Ocasavo, who passed away suddenly on April 6th. Please pray for eternal rest of Nunez O and for the consolation of his family and friends. And the second person is John Talbot, who's a former resident from a prominent family here in town. He died suddenly as well. Thank you. Madam clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
I have put notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the Municipal Park and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon completion of typing and proofreading by the Municipal Park.
Okay, thank you. Tonight is also the night that we collect food for the Office of Concern Food Pantry in Englewood at St. Cecilia's Church. There's a collection box outside. If you brought food, or thank you very much for doing that. If you forgot, you can still bring it in later tomorrow morning. The Office of Concern actually sent us a thank you letter last month, and that's also, it's listed on the caucus agenda. So I thank them for their thank you letter as well. It's a nice relationship, and we're doing good things to help people who need it. Also, it's noticed on the caucus agenda and the correspondence is New Jersey Department of Transportation. We fortunately were provided a grant of $202,000 recently for road paving projects, so that money will definitely go to good use. And then there's also a letter from Spectrum regarding smart cities programs that they have in our borough administrator, Lizette Duffy, is going to look into that program and get back to us if there's anything that could make us a smarter city. Or just a smart city. The department head reports, Mark Neville from the DPW is here, so I'm going to ask you to give you your report, and then you're welcome to leave after that. There's no reason to stay. You can stay as long as you want, but you can leave whenever you want.
Um, maybe I'm a mayor apologize for being late. Uh, with the contract is well fielded. Well, the contract is solidly viable. The field of Lily Field yesterday and created the clay field this afternoon. Actually stopped on the way here. Some punches out of the group, otherwise probably move it on very good. PSCNG is in town doing the gas main upgrade. They'll move it here for, you know, for probably summer.
Is that their equipment over at the?
Yes, yes, that's the thing here. Um, which we come out of the street when they're not. Definitely want some of, most of summer, it's September. I have made arrangements to get some much equipment off the street during Easter holiday weekend. So long as it's there, uh, that's PSCNG's, uh, should be a thought. Hold up, otherwise, um, you know, first moving forward.
Okay, we made it through the winter?
We made it through the winter, not bad. We had a couple storms in March, first and March 4th. Everybody got out and around alright.
Yeah, it worked out really well. The guys did a great job, and we all appreciate it. Please extend our thanks to your staff.
Um, other than that, you know, operations best as usual, and being able to contact people, that's all.
Great, thank you. Did you want to give a report for the department heads?
Um, I'd like to elaborate a little bit on what Mr. Neville spoke about. As far as roads, we've had a wonderful working relationship this year with PSCNG, and they are amenable to providing the borough with either funding or paving. So where roads don't really have to be paved full side, we're getting credit for that, so that's great. Mark worked with me on that. And North Vale did their bid openings for the Riverside Polack, and perhaps at the next meeting, we can award to, what vendor was it?
Uh, DNL.
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 So we're working on that. And just a little update on Fifth Street. Neglia Engineering has been working with Mazer, getting all the information to review Fifth Street, because I'm of the opinion that whatever Mazer did shouldn't be duplicated to Neglia and then having an additional cost to the residents. So they're basically taking over where Mazer left off. They've been speaking with the residents, and they also spoke with Fort Lee and the possibility of tapping into their sewer system and working something out. I know Dan Lee, the engineer, is also dealing with Michael Kirksey regarding an application that's at the planning board just to look at different paving projects for Fifth Street.
Okay, thanks. Can I just ask, was there anything new on the Northern Valley Greenway? Just had another minute.
Uh, no, mayor, my apologies. I did not bring it with me.
Okay, next meeting's fine.
Absolutely, my apologies.
Just let us know if we have to do anything to...
I did, I did look into it. I didn't see any resolutions from other towns other than meetings.
Okay.
But I happen to know who the gentleman is that's running it. I will contact him and see if there's a sample resolution that we can adopt and just show that we are on board with what they...
Yeah, I think the council was supportive of that.
Okay.
Anything having to do with more green space. Okay, we have a list of minutes to approve, and I reviewed them last night. I had a couple typos I could give them to you after. Subject to minor typos, you guys could go ahead and approve those.
Question?
Yeah.
Um, March 5th special meeting minutes, I saw that, I didn't see the censure notice in there, but sort of proclamation of combination, didn't see the other thing. So if you don't have that, can you add that in? Is that?
Certainly. March 5th, right. So we're, I'm stopping it without it, and then I could add it in, if that's okay with everyone?
Well, if that's not, it goes to the poll until it's added in, then.
Whatever, council.
I'm okay either way, as long as I put it in.
Okay.
You know, you could add it that way, you could see the whole package.
Okay.
As ridiculous as it was. Okay, so do you want to just do, well, actually, there's people here from 18 and 19.
Let's do the 2018.
Okay, so whoever was here in 2018 and who's willing to approve the minutes, can you make a motion as to all the 18 minutes that are listed there? Someone?
For the record, Councilman Song came in, and it is 8:11. Welcome.
Sorry, everybody.
Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call on the 2019 minutes.
I think 18.
Oh, we're doing each person?
That was the motion, was for 18.
Okay. Yes, just one, really. Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Absent.
Savari?
Absent.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O? Councilwoman O, 2018 minutes. Okay. I'm going to put her as absent. Okay.
It passes.
Okay.
Can I have a motion for the three sets of minutes for 2019? It's February 13th, 2019 caucus, regular on the same day and March 5th special?
So I'm with, uh, March 5th at the special.
Okay. Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O? I don't know, what in the world?
You want to hang up and leave though?
We will. We got you back.
Okay. I don't know what you missed, Gloria, but we approved the minutes.
Okay.
So we could open to the public, have a motion to do that.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please just raise your hand. Let me recognize you, and then come up to the microphone at the table to your left as you come up.
Councilwoman Aversa asked me to find you.
Oh, Councilwoman Aversa just reminded our borough administrator that there is now a five-minute rule imposed by the council. Okay, well, I'd love to say seeing and hearing no one, we should close, but I see, if I did that, I know all the hands will go up, because no one wants to go first, except Mr. Nikao, who's raised his hand. You're welcome to come up, Mr. Nikao. Is that one up?
Andrew Nick at 54 Elm Street. My only comment this evening was unfortunately, the resident that I was speaking with earlier, she left and she didn't make it back. She had a concern regarding parking on Van Ostrand by Parkway Toyota. She felt that there was an issue where Parkway Toyota employees were monopolizing the street, and residents of Van Ostrand were having a problem. So I know she's not here right now. She said she was going to make it back, but clearly did not make it back in time, so...
Okay, uh, well... Yeah, so that came up last meeting also, and Officer in Charge Hill looked into it for us, and the Parkway Toyota management actually warned their employees to not be parking there, and I think there's a sign there for them as well. Am I missing anything, or is that all that? So I guess I just need to be more vigilant and patrol in that. Thank you, Mr. Nikao.
If she comes back, hopefully she'll get the word on it. The other thing I'd like to say is whoever's implemented the idea of putting a sign up on Clifton Terrace, good job. I think that that probably saves a lot of man hours in terms of our police officers having to go there, write tickets unnecessarily. Will miss the revenue, I'm sure, but, you know, then probably be better off. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes. Ms. Eastwood?
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. Tonight's closed section agenda listed police personnel. As we all know, the position of police chief is vacant. In the last few months, tapes made by former police chief Michael Chaffee have been made public. We now know that Captain Murphy and Lieutenant Henkelman are on Chaffee tapes engaging what I will refer to as obviously inappropriate conversations. Since this video is going online, and I don't think a discussion of what is actually there is appropriate. Those conversations showed an appalling lack of judgment and a complete lack of respect for Asian-Americans and women. We also have Kane Kim's email about Lieutenant Tracy, which the borough put on its online Oprah responses last year. Mr. Kim's email states, quote, "I noticed a few other cars had done the same thing as myself, driving past the road, closed sign, trying to figure out a way to get home. The officer did not belligerently approach the other vehicles and allowed them to go a different route without stopping them unnecessarily. I couldn't help but wonder why his treatment of me was inconsistent with the treatment of other drivers." Mr. Kim's email goes on to say, "I am curious as to why I was treated in the fashion I was, and others who had done the same were not. This inconsistency is troubling as one of the many Korean-Americans that live here. Councilwoman Aversa, you're chairperson of the Public Safety Committee. Do you think it's appropriate to promote someone who has engaged in anti-Asian or sexually demeaning conversations to the position of police, chief of police?" I guess you do. I'm not sure you feel the same way if they spoke about your daughter as the way they spoke about a woman on the tape. Councilwoman Aversa, do you think it's appropriate to promote someone who engaged generational profiling to chief of police? I guess you do, and you just won't admit it.
I don't want to disparage your time.
I think the police department needs a leader who believes that the police department must treat everyone equally and treat everyone with respect. There are six lieutenants. I'm sure you can find one who doesn't have a documented history of disrespecting residents based on their ethnicity or gender. Now, these tapes are public, everybody's going to know what the people said if you promote them. The Kane Kim letter was unredacted on the borough's website, and anybody who downloaded the eight months of Oprah requests that were on the borough's website has it with the name of the officer involved. So everybody's going to know these people's history, and I think we have a right to expect that the leader of the police department will treat everyone in this community with respect. The last police chief was the, what, fifth highest paid police chief in the state of New Jersey? We pay very well. If we pay very well, we are entitled to have the very best, not someone who thinks that making horrible comments because they don't think they're going to get caught is appropriate. This person needs to lead by example, and the examples that are on the tape and in the Kane Kim letter are not examples that we should want any police officer to emulate. They're disgusting and despicable.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
On January 24th, this council majority canceled the disciplinary charges against Captain Murphy, Captain Regan, Lieutenant Henkelman, and also Chief Chaffee. Internal affairs were to be initiated, yet Regan retired in good standing within six days from the start of the new investigation with $463,112.76. The outcome of the internal affairs was not disclosed, nor were we told if there was a pending, a penalty for the outrageous participation that was revealed on the Chaffee tapes. Murphy, Henkelman, and Tracy have applied for chief, and in my opinion, the chief position must be filled by an officer of the highest character and not one that used sexist racist comments, nor one that is litigious as Tracy is suing Englewood Cliffs and, in my opinion, initiated multiple lawsuits against the town as an officer of the PVA. Those lawsuits, in my opinion, were for the benefit of Democratic council candidates. Do not repeat the mistakes of the past that you made in previous appointments by appointing a political police chief that has a history of suing the borough. A chief should be chosen of the highest character, non-political, and not because of their race, whether it's Asian, black, white, or Hispanic, not because of their gender, whether they're male, female, transgender, homosexual, or lesbian. Each applicant should be treated equally with no favoritism or discrimination.
Yes, please just come up, state your name and address, and just take it home.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Telliers. I live at 133 Van Ostrand Avenue. I'm here on a little bit of a different note. I've lived in the neighborhood, I've lived in Englewood Cliffs for six years. Parkway Toyota is at the corner of our block. They're fantastic, we have no issues. We promote, we understand business thrives and helps the community continue to sustain. But in the last seven months, our block has become a parking lot. And that's all that, you know, essentially, we don't have sidewalks, our town is not constructed to be able to sustain, you know, as, you know, it's not an urban area. So essentially, when they park on the street, there's nowhere for people to walk. You see people walking with children and their dogs in the middle of the street. I leave for work in the morning, I can't even get out of my driveway. We've been trying to work with them, the police department has been meeting, they've come out. So we just need some help with that. I know that a lot of my neighbors have gone, spoken with the GM, and this is not a 911. We're just trying to make sure that, you know, they serve the community, we're respectful of them, and essentially, we just ask that they're respectful of us. And Saturday mornings, they're parking in front of our houses at 7:00 AM blasting music. So it's just...
Right.
That's all.
So we, I appreciate you coming in and saying that. Mr. Nikao came up before and said that...
I'm sorry.
He mentioned it, and I'll just repeat it. So this came up at the last meeting also, and Officer Hill, who's the officer in charge, contacted them, and I think there's signs that management put up there for their employees to not park Van Ostrand.
Yes.
They should be there, and now they just need to pay attention to them, which is, I guess, the next step of our enforcement. So we'll, we'll do this again tomorrow morning. I'll call Officer Hill, actually, he's on vacation, but whoever's in charge tomorrow morning, and ask them to talk to management at Parkway Toyota and see if they could find another place to park.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
We understand how the landscape works, we just, you know, we also, we can't sustain that parking lot, so we...
No, it's not fair to you. We want to make sure that residents have quality of life.
Yeah, totally fair. We want everyone to be happy, but I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. No, 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 how's it going? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Anybody else? Yes.
Maria Valari, 45 Jane Drive. I noticed that we have, again, we have going into secrecy to make all decisions as a taxpayer. I want to know what's going on with affordable housing. I want to know what's going on with police, and I think it's really time where you people need to be transparent. You fought for transparency, you ran on transparency, and yet we know nothing. I'm a resident, I'm a taxpayer. I really feel that you need to start telling us what's going on. I wanted, you know, at the last meeting, Mr. Mephesus made a comment that, I had made a comment about affordable housing and why we weren't having it on Hudson Terrace, and Mr. Mephesus got up and said, although he understood what my concerns were, he said it wouldn't work there. And, you know, I went home, and I thought to myself, what does he know that I don't know? Why doesn't it work there? I want to know. Why does it work there but not here? I want to know.
I'm sorry, this, this, no, sir, it doesn't, it does not give you license to speak. You can come up after and speak.
Tell me, tell me, nothing's wrong.
No.
Okay, I just don't, I don't want to have issues with other people. I, I listen to everybody. I only made that comment because obviously, Mr. Mephesus seemed to know a little bit more than I did, and I feel that as a resident, we all have a right to know what's going on. And again, you ran on transparency. Police, Ms. Savari, Mr. Aversa, how, how is it that we don't know what you are making these extreme decisions that affect all of us on individuals that have been not the best character people in the world? Okay? We, again, as a resident, I want to know. I want to know why you make the decisions you make. I don't want it to be in secrecy. These are things that affect all of us. Police affects all of us on a daily basis, and I would like to know what happened to all the internal investigations. I don't hear a word, not from anybody up there. What's going on? So does everybody get aliyaliatzen free? Is that what it is? Is that what you guys have decided to do? Because then just let us know, and we stop wasting our time in speaking to you. And what are we doing? Now we're talking about Murphy, and we seem to recycle the same families over and over again. Murphy's father was the chief, Mrs. Drummond's brother is the chief, they're all on the fire department. It's just so incestuous. It's so incestuous. And I don't feel comfortable in this town anymore. I really don't. I come up here and speak out of concern for my town, and for my well-being and my taxes, and all I see is blank faces, nobody answers a question, something that you were all upset if you didn't get an answer, screaming at every meeting that you wanted answers, yet you all look like blank face. You know what? You have a sign out there now, when you come into this building, that says stigma free. Do you really know what that stigma free means? You don't seem to care about stigma free when it comes to your people, and I'm really disgusted with that. I listened to some of the tapes, very upset. I'm going to take time and listen to them in depth and really understand what's going on in this town. It's really disturbing. Ms. Duffy, you, to hear her collude with Chief Chaffee about how to entrap somebody on this board to make them look bad, and she's going to call Evan and just say, hey, just look what's on my desk, and, you know what? This is so concerning to me. I cannot believe that you are allowing this to go on, and you're all okay with forgiving everybody. If that were me out, if I was out here in front of a judge, I would not be forgiven. You would not be there protecting me the way you are protecting all the wrongdoers that are hurting this town, and I hope that you change what you are doing and you do the right thing by the residents of this town. Thank you. Oh, by the way, you know, that's really rude to have that bag there. You can't see your face. It should be on the floor, not in front of you.
True. Actually, I'll put it right here, but you can continue to make faces of you if you like. Who's going to make faces? It's such a tie.
Okay, okay, right. It's, it, that, okay, we're actually making progress through this meeting pretty well tonight, so let's keep the momentum going. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Over on the phone with Andrew Nick, at the same, like, Van Ostrand Avenue. I was here last month regarding the restricted parking. I was here last month regarding the restricted parking. I spoke with us that last week, and I know that OIC Hill and Mark Neville are working on the signage. I saw Clifton Terrace has this sign up, and I know they have a horrible situation there, dangerous as well. Our streets that are on the restricted list have been on there for years, and no one's done anything about it. I'd just like to get an idea of when this is going to be done, because I'm tired of calling, I'm calling, because you had said put it on my list and to make sure it gets reported. I'm tired of calling the cops.
You're here for Van Ostrand?
No, A Street.
A Street, right. I'll take that.
Just to get an idea when it's going to be, because I called just because you said so it gets on the list.
So the good news is Clifton Terrace has been resolved.
Yeah, I know. Great, because that was a dangerous situation.
Right, so now Van Ostrand seems to be up next, and A Street as well, so.
And Mr. Liasco did call me, I think, last week?
I think it was last Monday. Just, I know you probably have to order the signs, but just it's getting bad.
So what I had done, and what I recommended to Officer Hill, and here creep, was to have our ordinances having to do with parking, and assign an officer to drive through every town in the borough and make sure they have the appropriate signs. A list was given to Mr. Neville, and new signs are being printed, and the streets will be properly updated. Now, whether the sign fell off, or it washed, you know, faded, I don't know.
We never had this.
I can only tell you what I'm doing now, and that's having every street checked against our ordinance, and every street in Anglerwood Cliffs will have a proper signage.
Because what I gave you was, because I went around and did a review myself on those streets that were restricted, streets, and those street signs were never up, so.
Do you have a timeframe for getting that accomplished?
How, however long it takes the printer to give.
Okay, I was just, I'm not complaining, I just wanted to get an idea.
I know, it's, these quality of life issues are very important.
Clifton Terrace is dangerous, you can get a fire truck or an ambulance down there, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tony Mephesus, 26th Town Street, Anglerwood Cliffs. I'd just like to respond to Ms. Valari. What I was addressing was the Republican plan of knocking down this building and the police department, and moving the tower, and building 54 apartments here, and so on and so forth. I have no information about anything else. That's the only thing that I oppose, because I don't believe that it made sense, and I don't believe the numbers made sense. Other than that, I have no knowledge of any building in Anglerwood Cliffs. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Give a motion to close the public, oh, there's one person.
Councilman Versa, Ms. Savary, I believe you're on, Mr. Song, I think you're on the police committee too? Integrity. What is the definition of integrity? Integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness. He is known to be a man of integrity. I am assuming that the police committee will be conducting interviews for the next chief of police. Given what we have uncovered with the almost 120 audio tapes surreptitiously made by former Chief Chaffey, this is a very important task. Integrity is a fundamental trait required for police work, and I believe it to be one of the most important qualities. Integrity is what allows the public to put their trust and confidence in their law enforcement officers. Unfortunately, unfortunately, after listening to the Chaffey tapes, we can hear officers within the Anglerwood Cliffs Police Department that do not possess integrity. What is the police committee's recommendation in regards to what they heard the officers say on those tapes? And you can answer me, I don't want to waste my five minutes, I'll speak all at once, and I would really appreciate answers. We come up here every meeting, ask questions, you sit there, and you don't answer the public, and you are elected officials and should answer. How are you protecting the public from these officers that have shown they are lacking the integrity needed? Captain Murphy, Lieutenant Henkelman, Lieutenant Tracy, and Lieutenant McDermott are all in leadership positions in this department. It deeply saddens me to say this, after knowing these officers for over 15 years, that after hearing these tapes, seeing the Oprah requests and their responses, along with the discovery exchange and the Chaffey litigation and others, it is my opinion that they do not have the integrity needed, or the leadership qualities needed, to be a chief of police. In my opinion, these officers have violated their own rules and regulations, to say the least, amongst other things. I believe that some of them should be either fired or demoted from their leadership positions. After hearing these tapes, I believe they are a disgrace to the uniform that they wear, and the oath of office that they took to protect and serve. Not only are some of them not leaders, it is my opinion that some of them are liars. If any of these four officers are chosen to be the next chief of police of Anglerwood Cliffs, it is my opinion that not only will you be rewarding bad behavior, you will be showing that you do not care that rules and laws need to be followed, and you will show that you do not care how all your residents are treated. There have been so many lawsuits coming and going. Has the police committee looked into all these allegations and found out what the truths are? It is your responsibility to do so before you appoint a new chief. If you do not, how do you know that you will not be appointing someone who engaged in these egregious acts stated in these lawsuits? You owe this to the taxpayers and residents of this town, who have been footing the bills for the last 13 years, because the Democrats only pick and choose what suits them to investigate. You owe it to all the residents of this town to know that all officers are not either engaging in racist discussions, sexist discussions, do not engage in sexually harassing commentary, and that they have integrity, not just for the chosen few, but for all. The public is still awaiting the outcome of the investigations which were promised by you back in January of this year. We are now in April, and it is still radio silent. At the last meeting, Councilman Versa, I asked you the same question, and you said you didn't know. I would hope by now that you took the time to look into that, and that you have an answer for us tonight on the outcome of those investigations. And after I finish my last paragraph, I would look forward to hearing what you have to say. The purpose of the liaison of the police department is to have the answers. You are all elected officials, and elected officials are supposed to provide answers to the questions of the residents that ask. Councilman Versa, you were also police committee chair in 2015, and it's my understanding that then Sergeant Tracy jumped Sergeant Conches to become lieutenant. At that same time, then Lieutenant Murphy jumped Lieutenant Muira to become the next captain. In turn, Muira sued, and the taxpayers paid for that as well. How did that happen, Councilman Versa? You were the police committee chair then also. It's also my understanding, I only have three sentences. Thank you. It is also my understanding that the promotional policy, Councilman Versa, back then, in effect, was utilized in 2015, had been changed and was not approved by the mayor and council. How did that happen? Are you aware of that? And, if so, why did the PBA in 2015 not sue, as they sued in 2018 citing that it changed from their PBA agreement? Is that because Lieutenant Tracy and Lieutenant Murphy jumped to offices and benefited from that? Is that the reason? Again, I hope you will be choosing the next chief of police based on political payback. We will all know the answer when you make your recommendation. But I've asked some really important questions. I'm going to go back to my seat, and I really hope that you're going to answer some of these very important questions, because the entire town is watching and waiting to hear your answers. I know my time is up, but please answer the questions.
Councilman Versa, did you want to respond?
I don't know if what counsel, a former counsel person, McMorris, what she said is accurate, I have to go through and see for myself, so I'll find out.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Give a motion to close the public portion. Call in favor. Just to, because commerce being made, kind of lumping the whole governing body as one, just so we understand where I stand on certain things, I'm going to give you an update and a couple of fact points as well that you may not be aware of. D I G Building, which is looking phenomenal, is probably the nicest looking office building in New Jersey, has been completely closed, so all the windows are up, and they're amazing in terms of keeping to their schedule, so that should all be completed by November, December latest. They've also done a lot of plantings. It's a phenomenal number of trees that they're planting, it's over 1,000. And so for the residents on that side of Van Ostrand, it's going to look great. They've had to put up with construction, and dust, and vibration, and noise, so right now, they actually replaced the windscreen to keep the dirt out. So D I G has been a great neighbor, they've been doing everything that they said that they would do, and I don't think any of us appreciated how many trees they were actually going to be planting, it's just an amazing number. So that looks great. In terms of the budget, I've asked that it push forward, and that there be a workshop, I think there'll be one next week, is what you told me potentially, or you're trying to schedule one? Yeah, okay. Okay, well, that's great, because we do need a budget. My instructions to the budget personnel chairperson was that there should be no tax increases, there's no reason for that to happen, so I'm still sticking to that. I hope that that's the case when you produce a budget. I mentioned Clifton Terrace, those residents were bringing concern by the uptick in commerce at the corner with the brownstone pancake factory, and it's good news, bad news. So good news is we have a thriving restaurant in town, the bad news is there's a lot of people coming through town and parking, but I think the parking's been sorted out now there, and as I mentioned, Van Ostrand, and A Street, and anywhere else, we have parking issues, the quality of life issues should definitely be addressed. That's the paramount importance, is where we all live in Anglerwood Cliffs, is to be close to the city but not be in the city, right? So we chose this town for a reason, and we want to preserve that reason for you as best as we can. In terms of the affordable housing litigation that's going on, we've told...
I'm going to advise you not to comment on affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. So before I went into closed session, I said I haven't received an update since March 31 as mayor, so it's not just you all that are in the dark, and the people at home who are in the dark. I've been kept in the dark also, so I don't know anymore now than I did before, so no one's updated me properly. In terms of, there was a meeting held on March 20th, there's a special meeting, I don't believe there was actually a quorum, but there was a decision made to restate a little league coach repudiate guilty to assaulting a law enforcement officer last year. He did not pass a background check, he got suspended, it was all in the middle of the road. Parents petitioned, some parents petitioned to have him reinstated, this council seemed to have voted yes, although I don't think there's a quorum, so I don't think it's a valid vote. Look, if parents want to decide what's good for their children, that's fine, they can sign the petition, it's their child, it's their child, so.
Mayor, we don't know the reason.
Right, so you negated the penalty, right? So, no, you negated the penalty. We had imposed a penalty. So what I was saying at the time of the interrupted is, so the parents have the right to decide what's best for their children, and what threats or dangers they want to expose them to. I, as mayor, don't have that luxury. I'm not going to raid my friendship with somebody and say, well, I'm friends with him, or he's a great coach, they've got this issue, let me expose your child to that problem. I can't do that. It's very black and white for me. If you do that to a law enforcement officer, you shouldn't be coaching children. I see things very black and white, some people on council don't, and obviously Deb Savary doesn't see it the same way I do.
That's two years.
The, again, again, the person has to pass a background check, period. In two years, no, 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 you're not, you're not being logical here, Ms. Savary. The person has to pass a background check regardless of who they are, okay? And if they can't pass it, for me, well, obviously, you're in favor of reinstatement, I'm not, okay? And I'm also, I'm also in favor of having quorums when we have meetings, and there was no quorum last time. The chief promotion process, I've also been kept in the dark on that by the public safety committee headed by Councilman Versa, or have been. The other thing that I want to mention to everybody here publicly, and also at home who are watching this, is that there's a newsletter that comes out every so often sporadically, it's called Eye on the Cliffs. That is a political newsletter. That is a political newsletter started by Deb Savary, Karen Geiger, Melanie Simon, and others, who, now, this is a Democratic Party newsletter disguised as a non-Democratic Party newsletter. So the facts that are pretended to be in there are not really facts, those are feelings, okay? And everyone's entitled, hold on a second, everyone is entitled to their own opinion, however, you're not entitled to your own facts, okay? Now, if you're going to put, if you're going to, if you're going to put out a newsletter, identify it as a Democratic Party newsletter, register it properly, don't break the law and pretend you're not, okay? That's all I'm saying.
Break the law.
So everyone who's at home, and you get that in the mail, just, and the other thing I want to say is, because there's great liberty taken in writing about me and other things in that newsletter, if anyone has questions about where I actually stand on something, what I said about something, just call me, or email me, or text me, and I will answer. I'm in with you. But do not take the word of Ms. Geiger. Do not take that word, because Ms. Geiger herself has had issues with elections in the past, and she's been reprimanded for unethical electioneering. And it was Mr. Lozner actually brought that action, which was actually hysterical. One more fact point for you. What happens often in towns like this, where everybody knows everybody, and appoints their friends to be lawyers, and, not you, because we actually really know each other, what happened was, so Mr. Wunsch got appointed as borough attorney for three months, and then he stayed on as special counsel. So in that three months, he's, oh, yes, two months, and then he's still special counsel. So in that three months, we've paid him as a borough $80,000, this is how you pay back your friends politically, right? You give him a cushy job, to basically get rid of all the charges against the chief and other officers, to settle with an engineer who did a bad job and there's flooding in Moro Road. So $80,000 later, our residents still had the same problem with flooding, we still had the same issues in the police department, because that hasn't been dealt with. Now, I do want to say that Officer Hill has been in charge since Chief Chaffey was suspended in October and subsequently retired. Officer Hill has done a fantastic job. There is good morale, there's a great level of professionalism in that police department, and I'm very proud of what he's done, okay? And I really have to talk to him, because I know he's doing what he should be doing, okay? And that's really great, not only for me, but for you residents, because you're paying these salaries, okay? That's all I have in terms of updates and fact points. We have payment of claims.
So actually, Mayor, I'd like to address some of the residents' concerns that they have, but I haven't answered. So I want to start with the fact that in closed session, we in fact are not discussing... I'm not. I'm not. We're not discussing, you're concerned that we're discussing chief and who's being hired as chief in closed session. There's a process, it's being followed, there will be interviews, and it will be followed properly. Whatever decision is made by the committee and the council as a whole will be the decision. That's the process, that's how it works. There's nothing, there's nothing that's being hidden from the public. As far as affordable housing, it's currently in litigation, so I can't speak about it. When my predecessors were sitting up here, that answer was always acceptable to everybody, that it was in litigation and we were unable to speak about it. So again, it's in litigation, and I'm unable to speak about it, which is why I haven't spoken about it. Now, as far as the IA investigations, you know, it's taken me a little while to try to understand how this whole process works. This is my first year up here. So it's my understanding that when something goes to IA, that it basically stays there, and it doesn't come back to the council, until in fact, a decision is made, and if the officer doesn't agree with that decision, then a hearing officer is appointed, and then the hearing officer is appointed, they make a decision, they come to the council. So as far as when we threw it back... So as far as when we threw it back to the IA, where that was Murphy and Henkman, so I have yet to hear, other than the letter that the mayor got because he had filed the complaint, that the IA was closed, they do not share with us what the decision was. So, that being said, what I'd like to talk about is, you know, I understand there's a lot of people upset by tape 78, but what I'm concerned about with tape 78 is that the Lanza and Lanza bills, okay, which very clearly say that there was discussion regarding IA. Now, I don't care whose IA it is, whether it was Nick Morrow's or Tracy's or whomever was going on at the time, at no point in time should this council be having any conversations with Lanza and Lanza in regards to IAs. So I'd like to make a motion that this council hire an attorney or prosecutor, whoever it may be, to look in to what actually happened with Lanza and Lanza, and why in fact our mayor and council members were having discussions with them. So I'd like to take, I'd like to take a vote on that. One thing at a time!
So, let me just do this...
There's a motion on the table?
Yeah, let me just do this, in terms of what you said regarding the discipline...
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, you want a second, you guys want to vote on this?
Yes.
All right, then expand the investigation to include everything that was dismissed and discharged.
No, right now, there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor.
You can't pick and choose and...
I come up here...
Well, you shouldn't pick and choose justice, it's your friend.
No, every time, every time the residents, a few residents, come up here every meeting, and they accuse me of doing things that aren't going on.
All right, then have a vote.
So I think we should investigate what was happening on this council prior to my coming on.
I think prior and after, prior and after, how's that?
Taking a vote.
Prior and after.
Nope.
Investigate everything, because you guys just threw a million dollars away. Well, I'm going to open up to the public then. We need to, you do actually, because it's an open public...
No, you do not, no, no!
Here's the problem with what you just did, the public has the right to comment on this. It does, under the Open Public Meetings Act...
That's not true.
Well, why don't you want to have a comment?
That's not true.
It is, that's apparently, do we have to open to the public?
For a motion.
For something that wasn't on the agenda. Well, I think, since I'm the chair of the meeting, I will open to the public, anybody from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand and come up and speak. Anybody from the public. No, I could open if I wanted, yes. I'm opening to the public, I'm opening to the public. I am not going to violate, I'm not going to violate the Open Public Meetings Act. Your name and address?
Maria Valari. I, I'm sorry, you, you cannot do, you cannot do what you are doing. If you're going to open an investigation, open it to everything, you want to investigate, then investigate, don't pick and choose what you want to investigate, okay? So shame on you, shame on you Debbie, for doing what you're doing, for not representing all of this town instead of just your friend.
I could open to the public. If you wanted to make, hold on a second, if you wanted to make a motion, if you wanted to make a motion, you should have done it before we opened to the public, and then we would have the public comment on it then. Since you're making a motion now, we'll have the public comment on it now.
At the caucus, I ask, are you adding anything to the agenda? You all sat there and said no. You're not adding anything to the agenda, five of you got up here and questioned IA. Okay, so you should be, then you need to advise them. This is his way of diverting, this is about him. And he's getting involved with IA.
So, let's keep it open to the public, just for this issue.
What is the attorney's name, what is the attorney's name?
Just for this issue, we'll open to the public. The attorney agreed with you.
No, I did not agree with you. Sir, I did not agree with you. Sir, sir, this is a very serious issue that was just added to the agenda. And you are barring the public, myself included, who they are asking for an investigation. I am stating to you that I am interpreting this as a complete retaliation against me by this council, because I, because I asked of the outcome of the internal affairs investigation, and because I asked that question, Ms. Savary spitefully is asking for an investigation about me, when? I have repeatedly stated that the meeting was about Moro Road.
This is not something open to the public.
And the borough clerk has been cleansed when she is at the center of this entire investigation, entire subject matter, she is the one. So if you're going to investigate, then you need to investigate everyone, and not just take...
Anybody else in the public? Yes. Come on, folks, you were doing so well there for a while, come on, folks. No, 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 no! You want to add to the, you want to add to the agenda, you should have done it before.
We're going to take a vote right now, it's just on, I don't even know if this is...
Councilman Woo, Councilman Woo, on advice of council, he just asked me to proceed with the vote.
I have a, I have a resident speaking, I run this meeting, the attorney does not run the meeting. The attorney does not run the meeting, he's there for advising council. Stop, you can't interrupt, there is a public portion. So, why don't you want to hear from the public on this issue?
Because there is a motion on the table. Just take the vote.
Go ahead.
Do that, take the vote.
Go ahead. Folks, come on, folks, what are you afraid of the public for? The public has something to say. No, no, you're actually breaking the law, because you're not letting people speak publicly when they should be speaking. You changed the agenda after public portion, they have the right to speak.
Adding motions that we do all the time, it suits you only.
You should have a public discussion, what's wrong with that? Are you afraid of the public?
Apparently yes.
I'd go to raise your hand, and then you could come up and speak also. You're welcome to come up, yes, Mr. Slater would like to speak, come on up, sir. Come up, sir. No, no, I'm recognizing you, after, all right, you can continue.
I am extremely disturbed about this, we investigate when it's politically convenient for us. I have brought numerous allegations and documentation of misconduct to this council, and nothing ever seems to get investigated, and I will be sending my list again, and since we are investigating, I accept absolutely everything to be investigated, and I would like to remind you that you probably want to read the official...
No, interrupting the public.
Because if your allegations is official misconduct.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
The public is not to be heard on this portion. The vote is passed?
I just very appreciate, 12 Irving Avenue, I think it's abhorrent the way you guys act up here, all right? If you're introducing something that's, you're authorizing expenditure of borough money to hire somebody, whatever, whoever, to do this investigation, you need to put a resolution on the agenda, you have a resolution for everything when you're hiring somebody, or hiring, or authorizing an action, and you should allow the public to speak, you should allow the public to speak on it, okay? Mrs. McMarlow, Mrs. McMarlow asked at the caucus, was anything to be added to the agenda? Well, if this is adding something to the agenda, because you are inserting something...
You're concerned about IA investigations.
I am, I am.
So am I.
Okay, and I'm concerned about no action and cover-up by the council. That's what I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned about a borough clerk that apparently, according to the tape, tried to leak Councilman Aversa, Councilwoman O about the Lanza and Lanza bill, and said, "Oh, it's here, it's there, it's on my desk", whatever, okay? And then, and then it's Councilwoman O brings it up at the next meeting, how convenient, how convenient. If you're going to do this investigation, go to the root of it with the borough clerk, and then take it forward, don't start it after the fact, all right? And Mrs. McMarlow has repeatedly said that she had nothing to do with that, that she only met with Lanza and Lanza regarding the Moro Road flooding. Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome, Ed. You're really, you're really doing the wrong thing here, repeatedly.
And anybody else wishing to be heard? Mr. Slater, you have so much to say from that chair, why don't you come up and say it publicly? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? So, what I want to make clear is that, the crowd is yelling at each other. It's a non-emergency call, officer, officer, the public was at each other. Yes. Say your name and address, please.
Number one, borough clerk, are you recording this? Is this on the record, all this fake public exchange? I would ask the borough attorney, instruct the borough or clerk to remove this from the record, since it was not a public motion made to open the public session. Did any of you guys vote to open the public session?
I opened it, in my power.
This should be removed from the record and done properly. Mario, you're not the king here, you're a terrible lawyer, but you're not the king
Name, Colin? Name, Colin? But here's the thing, under New Jersey... Back him up, back him up, back him up. Back him up, leave, you're finished. You've lost your license to speak, sir. No, no.
Are the bylaws, the council votes on removing me from the seat, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is actually correct.
No, it's not correct, because the officer has superiority, go ahead.
The mayor can't decide in points what the bylaws to remove anybody from this room, it has to be a vote.
Your hands are shaking, why don't you just leave? Enough, enough, go.
I think you should just go sit in the public.
Thank you, officer, appreciate your help. So, one thing that Ms. Savary missed before was, under COA, when we had the council last year, all COA matters were always shared with the entire governing body in closed session. That changed, so she's not being truthful, because she's saying that she's telling everybody everything, but we sat there and she didn't tell us anything. No, no, it is shared with the public, but you're not, no, 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 but you're not sharing with me, that's disgraceful. I have no idea what you guys have been working on. The other thing is, the other thing is, in terms of, in terms of the dismissal of the charges against Chief Chaffey, Henkman, Murphy, and Regan, you were fine with dismissing that, even though on those tapes you hear, you hear, you hear a chief threaten the life of a council person, you hear racist comments by a captain, right? The Asian American community was just put down by Captain Murphy repeatedly. You heard sexually harassing arguments and discussion, and sexual targeting, okay? So, you know, that's, that's what you're willing to live with.
Well, how about him?
Why don't you withstand the investigation? Why don't you withstand the investigation and include all the bad acts from everyone, and for once in forever, get this town cleaned up? You don't do that, because they own you, because they own you! That's why! Let's move on.
He threw somebody out now, and he's acting like a...
Call me, you gotta tell me your name today, come on now. That's what you do, right? Here's the thing, guys, here's the thing. What you have right now, what you have right now is anarchy with Sung, Savary, Aversa... They will not do the right thing for this town, okay? They will not.
Yes, we will.
They will put up with racism, they will put up with sexual harassment, they will put up with targeting, but they go through the wrong thing. All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, expand the investigation, include everything and everybody. What's wrong with that, Debbie? What are you worried about? What are you worried about? You worried that your friends might get in trouble? People do things, they get in trouble. I have nothing to worry about. Your behavior is out of control. This is the same gentleman.
This is the same gentleman, he sends out letters to the pension board regarding our police officers, right? Mario, did you not send... You CC the whole council and the borough attorney, did you? No, you didn't.
I have no idea what to talk about.
I guess you know exactly what I'm talking about, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Once again, once again, you know that early.
So here's the thing, everybody...
We're done, we're done with you, Mayor.
What you just saw is how politicians get bought. That's what you saw, you just saw how politicians get purchased in this town, okay? That's what happens.
That's okay.
All right, let's move on, let's move on. All right, we have, we have, they voted already, it's, it's, it's an improper vote.
We voted.
Okay, all right, public, all right, folks, all right, we're on the ordinance, guys, 2019-06. The public needs to stop talking so we can finish this meeting. All right. Ordinance 2019-06, and ordinance permitting travel organizations... All right, folks, folks, folks. All right, Mr. Slater, sit down, please.
The first order is payment of claims, resolution 19100.
Okay, so that, resolution 19108, March 21st, 2019, 30 plus 17, 2019, the payment of claims amount is $5,786,591.84. We have a motion to approve that.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savary?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
And by the way, another $20,000 and that went to Wunsch, okay? Another $20,000 went to Wunsch, for doing what they want him to do.
Keep raising your voice.
All right, the next thing is, ordinance 2019, this is a public hearing on 2019-06, it's an ordinance permitting travel organizations to solicit contributions in the railway situated in the borough of Englewood Cliff, so this is really to help the fire, the voluntary fire department. You can put your hand down, because the public portion is closed. So, could I have a motion to open to the public for that? It's just for that ordinance, okay? All in favor? Okay, so you're welcome to come up and speak as to that ordinance only, does anybody want to give a summary of that ordinance, because it's hard for the public to understand what it is?
Sure. So, what it is, the fire department asked if the council would consider allowing them
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O? Next one is ordinance 2019-07.
Are you going to add a resolution that Councilwoman Sabari passed? 114, that would be 114, to investigate the Lanza and Lanza situation over that was... I don't know.
Is that...
Yeah, go ahead.
What you guys are doing. What was the other one?
Just put it on. What was the other one? Give her a number.
Okay.
Adding a number.
Oh, I see what you're doing. So you're adding a number and you're expanding it to include everything?
No.
No, I don't know. We're just giving a resolution.
Okay, so here's the thing.
You don't need a resolution. I don't think you need a resolution. I don't think so.
It's not a resolution, it's just a motion.
I don't know what you guys are doing. Don't know what you guys are doing.
All right, ordinance 2019-07. First reading, with a public hearing on May 8th. An ordinance amending Chapter 17, Section 13, entitled Establishment of Restricted Parking Spaces for Handicapped Persons of the Code of the Borough of Engle Eclipse, Bergen County, New Jersey. I need a motion?
Can you explain that? Just so people understand.
Sure. It's just so that we are in line with state statute as far as people that break the law and take...
Has to do with ticketing.
With ticketing, correct.
I have to make sure people understand.
And take the spots of handicap, correct. Need a motion?
Second.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
That's it?
So, yeah, so what I think the public and the people at home should do to restore law and order in this town is, I'm going to give you two phone numbers you should call, okay? The first one is the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office. That's 201-646-2300. 201-646-2300, Bergen County Prosecutor's Office. You all should call and, and tell them what's going on in this town because apparently they're not hearing it and Katie's not doing a very good job in the northjersey.com. We're learning that, but I wish you would. The other number is the New Jersey Attorney General's Office. That's 609-292-4925. And that's what I was just researching when I was here. That's 609-292-4925. There's a heightened level of criminality here from what I have seen and observed with these tapes, no one's doing anything about it. And then, to add insult to injury, I've got a council here that's cleansing all that and pretending it didn't happen and pretending racism is okay, which it's not. We know it's not, but they're not willing to take that step. And what's really crazy is, we have Asian Americans under council willing to tolerate that. So can you imagine the political influence on these people that they're not willing to actually fight for their own citizens, their own ethnic backgrounds? I mean, it's ridiculous. Anyway, I've said enough. You know where I stand on this stuff.
You have a campaign, please.
You know where I stand on all this. So, we're going to have mayor and council for the day on May 8th, 2019. Is that, is that right, May 8th? Is that the night meeting? Is there a day program also for that?
No.
All right. So we're going to have children assume our roles and come in and run the town on May 8th at 6:30, so come on in. And if somebody had a committee or council member report, please feel free to raise your hand and just say, or just say what you want about your committees. The Easter egg hunt was very well done, by the way. I thank Ellen Park for doing that. Thank you. I do give praise, the praise is deserved. Well done. And I know Ed was helping and, I don't know who else was helping, other people were helping also. So you earned, did a good job. Kids enjoyed it and I thought children were very happy with the golden eggs, so. Liz Atafi also insisted, I'm sure, in some way. All right.